Four. No, okay, in that case, we're whizzing right along. Um. I sent out the minutes, but I only sent them out today and then I had to send out a second copy because I forgot to finish a sentence. Because. I did. So does anyone actually manage to read them? They're not very thrilling.
I I read them.
I'll I'll move acceptance.
Great, thank you. And I'm going to have Michelle and Barbara as the as the movers. And. All those in favor?
I I.
Okay. Those texts. Okay. And. The town council report, Councilman Murray, as they say.
I don't believe the town council has anything to report since last week.
Wow. Well, you know, you could make something up and it would be much more interesting than, but.
Well, I well, I could tell you that in a in an executive. I don't know if I can tell you yet. But we're making strong progress on the code officer. That's all I can say.
Okay. That sounds good. Glad to hear that.
What what?
The code officer there. They're in the hiring.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're in the hiring mode.
Did the law pass last night?
It wasn't last night. The law passed. They didn't. They passed the law.
No, that no, actu- actually, last night, we had to have a special meeting.
Oh.
Um, to. Have further specification. Of which officers are covered in the law. The law passed unanimously.
Oh, that's the one where you don't have to live in the town? Is that that law? Okay, so that law. Okay.
So so it did pass. Something did happen.
Yeah.
Sorry, I guess I just didn't understand that as being so eventful. Even though we had to come back for a special meeting for it.
Okay, I don't think we actually have to finish anything on Article Five. I think we finished. Uh, but we except that we didn't vote on anything and I'm not really, I think it the article is such a mess that I need to go back and look at it once more before we come back and look at it again.
Yeah.
But we finished the discussion of it. So I think we're actually ready to go on to Article Six supplementary standards. And before I do that, I want to apologize for the giant mess of too many documents. And my inability to merge them. There is a theoretical way of merging two Google Docs. However, it appears to be beyond my feeble user skills.
Well, I actually think you don't want to merge the two because. Nan had made changes. What we want to do is start from the July version Nan had. And um, but we need the comments that she wrote in that and and Barb has now done a yeoman's work. I haven't looked at it, but apparently has. Uh, correctly made the Google version look like the Word version. Is that right, Barb?
Uh, well, yeah, Je- Jean, just so you know, um, and everyone knows what I did was to go through both documents, the Google Doc and Nan's version. And um, the problem, one of the major problems with the Google Doc is that it did not show clearly the deletions that Nan had made uh, in her July 2022 document. That were based on all the various comments that commission members made on the December 28th version. So what I did was to go through the Google Doc and add all of the deletions, show all of the deletions that were in Nan's document. Um, that said, um, Jean, this is an important element for you. Um, the the section that we did at our last meeting, July 19th. Um, is not clear um, in terms of what edits were made to the document. Uh, that the zoning commission made to the to to Nan's document. Um, I've I've tried to put notes in in there where I recall things being changed, but. It's very unclear uh, what is new language from July 19th. Uh, versus uh, comments, what still needs attention. So. Uh, go back into the Google Doc, Jean, and take a look at the few comments that I made, but also compare it with your notes. In terms of what changes were made at the July 19th meeting.
I can do that because I actually have written notes. So and I haven't. I haven't shredded them or anything yet. So. Okay, so I will do that.
So.
And I. Okay, Ernie.
Uh, is it safe to use this document then? The 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 current. Google Doc is it gonna get re-patched, being thrown away? I mean, it just. Yeah, at this point. I don't want to spend my time making a bunch of comments if they're just going to. You fall away, get lost in some ether.
Right. So let's let's see the that Barbara's Google Doc, and I think that if we make any changes in that document, then that should be fine, correct? Would you say?
Except for one question. The version of the document you put up. Whatever that was a week or so ago. Did that have Nan's edits to the previous article? Because she had made those in a Word file that she had. And I didn't know I I that you had the most current version of the Word file when you created the Google Doc.
Me, I mean for Section Five?
For uh, right, the whatever. Yeah, I'm I'm losing my numbers. I guess it must be Article Five, whatever is the.
I was using Nan's most recent document, so I can and I have that. I have them all, so I can go back and look.
But the problem with that was that that did not have Nan's comments.
It didn't. You're right. It didn't have Nan's comments in it, but it was the version.
So we have a document that we had gone through and we had made comments and we had had a lot of discussion on before and now. That's pretty much gone.
No, I still have it. I still have all of those.
Right, but.
Yeah, all the all those comments and edits that were done to section or to Article Five. That we started. Previously, um, and that they're still in the document that I sent out in July. All of those Chapter Five changes are there, all the comments that. Were either new comments or transferred comments from the July or the uh, December 28th. So that that does have them all. Um. And you know, and I I I don't know what. Conversion there is. I just, you know, assume that the Word document just seamlessly becomes a Google document. I don't use Google Docs, so I don't know how it works. But it was, um, you know, the fact that it didn't all. Slide right in into a, you know, one kind of master document is, um. You know, yeah, it's confusing and I I apologize that I did it that way. There were just so many changes to. Section one through four that was done as a Word document that I just continued that way.
I I I am very sure I can recover that and I will get it out to people. By the end of this week.
Just have you have to turn on. I think you have Nan's document there. Um. I think this is a problem, guys.
It is.
And. You know, because we, the system that we had before, I thought was fairly elegant. Uh, that is, everybody's comments were made in real time. When somebody commented on your comment, you've got a notification so you can kind of follow up on it. And it was that it was really useful when it came time to editing. And finalizing the document because we kind of, you know, we were all highlighting the points that we were concerned about. Now. We've got. You know, this. This thing that I mean, it's just, I mean, I was trying to go through through Jean's document and I couldn't figure hiding their tail out of what this was, whose comments were in there, whose weren't, this and that. So Nan's document. Does indeed have all of the original comments. Um, in a in in.
Summers.
Her, you know, in her her synopsis of the comments. And so. You know. Maybe, is there any way to share the the Word document? In a way that's almost as seamless as the Google document?
You, people can variously comment on a Word document. But it's not as easy to discern whose comments are rich. That's the problem with it.
I mean, don't you have to save the document and then send it back to somebody?
Yes.
You know, two people have the document open and.
Wait.
So it it seems to me at this point that what is missing, first, I'd want to make sure that Article Five really also clearly indicates edits and changes, which. We now has happened for the rest of the document, but I think that what we need. Is Nan's summary of the comments and her responses to some of those. Put imported into the Google Doc. And if we do that, I think that we're all set and we can keep working on the Google Doc. And you'll have exactly what you want, Ernie, that you'll get feedback, et cetera. What seems to be majorly to be missing is that. Synopsis of things. And when Nan made a change, she explained why. And if she didn't make a change, she explained why. All of that is missing. All that's in the Word document. I don't know how to bring that in. To the, you know, automatically into the Google Doc. And maybe there was a switch or a command that would have done that originally. But at the very least, it could be done by hand now, but.
Isn't that what Barb did? Barb, what I thought that's.
I I did not. I did not import Nan's comments from the July document that um, were the synopsis of policy-related issues. What I did was be because the the main problem that I saw with the Google Doc uh, were two. One. Uh, there were two major sections that appeared twice in the Google Doc, so that was very confusing. Um, but then the the most important thing was that the Google Doc um, did not show deletions. That Nan made. From the December 28th document. To her July that was showed up in the July document. That were based on all of the zoning commission comments made on editorial comments made on the December 28th version. So the Google Doc now indicates where deletions occurred. And to me, that was important because as I was going through the comments that. You and I and everybody was making on the Google Doc, I was thinking, huh, I thought we already talked about that. And sure enough, I went back to Nan's document and it was deleted in the July version. So what the Google Doc now indicates is all of the deletions from Nan's document. But it does not include uh, the the synopsis comments of policy issues. Um, that Nan wants us to discuss as a commission and uh, you know, not make those changes just herself.
Right.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
So Nan's document, where she's got the things crossed out, that's what we changed, correct?
Well, that's what that's what either you changed or in the December. Um, in the December version, if there was some wordsmithing or someone said, here's a better way of saying this, you know, non-policy things, I just I just did those. I just incorporated all of those. Non-policy kind of edits into the July version.
But that's where I got confused when I was looking at Jean's because they weren't deleted, Jean's.
Right.
Right, right. Anything that was a strikeout in the Word version just came through as plain text in the Google Doc. And so you would have a phrase that was supposed to be deleted that looked like it wasn't. And then you'd have the part that was replacing it right after it. It was really confusing. So that's what that's what Barb has now fixed for us. And what's missing. Is the side comments. And again, if there's no automatic way to do it. You know, a cut and paste will get on there, you know.
Right.
And I.
Well, huh, what about, I mean, is. Is it important? For you from here on in, for instance, is it important? For you to see all these deletions? I mean, can you just, can we just take the Google Doc? Accept everything, have a clean document. I can then take, I can download that clean Google Doc. Mesh it into the um. Word document and ha- well, then we have to get the comments back on Google Doc. I I don't know. I I, like I said. I I don't know. It's uh, I don't use Google Doc um, for this very reason. Um, I I don't. There might be other. Programs out there, um, like you can, you can um. P in PDF, you can comment in a PDF and everyone can see the comments and everyone can see how everyone comments to everyone else's comment. Um, but that's not editing in real time. It it, you know, it's like. A picture of the edits.
It doesn't avoid the issue Ernie's bringing up, which is that, I mean, you need something hosted in a central, like, you know, in the cloud, right? So that everyone accesses the same document. If you're doing on a Word doc or you're doing it on a PDF doc, unless it's hosted somewhere in the clouds that all everyone's editing the same piece. And that's what Google Doc is for. Then it gets confusing. I think, again, the third time, oh, what we should do is import Nan's comments into the Google Doc and then we'll pretty much be good to go.
Well.
But that's my view.
Here's another suggestion. Um, why can't we just kind of? Like back up. And just go back to the Google Doc that we had before Nan's edits, hold on to Nan's edits. And then just work forward with that previous Google Doc. And after we get through. You know, those comments, then go back and merge Nan's old document with the new document and and make it one. Does that?
I I don't. I don't get that. I I I don't. Because you've already moved beyond that. I mean, you've already done all of Chapter Five already as a group.
Right. I I mean, I think by Friday I can actually show you. A document that is what we all agreed to on on Chapter Five. Because I've got the various versions. I just need to spend. Four hours and to sit down and try to handle it.
Silly, I just, you know.
But I I think it's kind of a waste. I feel like we're going backwards. If we we go back to December 28th, that's just seems like a waste of time.
Not saying we go back to December 28th. I say we go back to. You know, let's just start, let's just say, okay, we're starting tonight on Article Six.
Yeah.
And let's. Use the old Google Doc that had all of the comments in it. That we had and forget about, you know, anything that happened before that and then just use that. To work forward and then when we're done with that, put it into.
But. I I I I don't agree with that. I don't agree with going back to the December 28th version because Nan's July document. Has done that synthesis for us. And if we go back to the December 28th document, we're going to be rehashing all the comments that people have made and have made, uh, you know, at that time in that document. Um. And Nan's already synthesized all that before us in in the uh, in in the Word doc that she produced. So. Um, I I think um, going into the Word doc from Nan and physically moving all of those comments into the Google Doc. Is the way to go. You know, I I spent a few hours this afternoon adding all the deletions. Um, you know, I can try to find some time. To go in and and move comments or we can split up the sections of who moves moves comments, uh, you know, from each section into the into the Google Doc. But I I really don't think we should go back to the December 28th version. And and here's another thing for the purposes of your discussion. This won't help. Off out of the meeting, but as we're discussing. If. One of you wants to. Make the changes in the Google Doc as we go, I can have. The July 20 or the July 20th, whatever the date was, I can have the July version up and point out. These were the comments. So as you go along. You know, I can point out and we can have it up on the screen, provided that we know exactly what the edits are that you ultimately make. Or or I can just put that document up as we go. We can make changes to it and we transfer those changes to the Google document if you want.
I I think that would be helpful as we go on Article Six tonight.
Oh, I got one question. When you go back to your document, Nan. When I got to page sixty-two. Specific environmental performance standards. That was all left out. And it didn't. I couldn't find the section she had in it. And I have it. And it's numbered, your pages are numbered, so it's easy to follow. But page sixty-two, then it went to sixty-three, didn't have specific environmental performance standards with your document that did have. So I kind of got lost when I got to that.
Are you look, are you at the in the Google Doc or the Word Doc?
You got me.
Yeah, I, because on on the Word Doc, that isn't even where those, page sixty-two isn't even where those things are.
Okay, well, then that's why I didn't find it.
Um, yeah, Bruce, that uh, the environmental performance standards, that was one of the areas that was uh, repeated erroneously in the Google Doc. Um, so it's very confusing.
Okay, so so.
Yeah, I.
I printed the.
I'm really sorry that this, you know, I thought that I was. Getting you all ahead by going through and changing all of your non-policy edits, so you were one step ahead.
Well, what what you did, the problem was, again, there's wrinkles in terms of moving from Word to Google Doc that we did not pay careful enough attention to. And that has gotten us now because things appear happen on multiple fronts in a little bit of a pickle, but Barb's done a lot of work to help get us out of that pickle. Um, and like I say, I would. If you you, did you look at Article Five? Barb, in terms of edits and strikeouts and deletions and.
That was the one that we discussed at the last meeting?
Right.
Ye- yes, and and that's what I was saying at the beginning to Jean that um, that. Because she was making changes.
Right.
The Google Doc as we went along, they don't show up as changes in the Google Doc. They don't show as revisions. And so I was trying to do it line by line comparison with Nan's doc document to the Google Doc. And I made some some comments in it about where I have questions or where I'm pointing out to Nan some language that is new or different from her July 2022 document, but I don't know that I caught them all. Because they weren't marked in any way. I was just doing it on memory.
As we said earlier, Jean said she would go through it very carefully. And Michelle, I don't know if you have notes from the meeting that you've shared with.
Well, I lost internet, so I when I I had I had a lot of notes about the very beginning, pull privilege of the floor and that discussion, but then when I I missed uh, quite a bit of. The discussion of five.
Um. All right. So so Jean, hope this will be necessary, but if it if it becomes necessary to have someone watch the video to make sure all the changes are captured, I I can do some of that work. Uh, because I think we want, because I think, you know, if I'm earning concerns, we need to make the Google Doc the master document moving forward. And but it needs to make sure it has all of Nan's changes already in it, because I also do not want to go back to the December 28th version. I want to start with Nan's July version. But we can make the Google Doc the master version. And Nan, that means you would make changes in your Word version to correspond to the Google Doc. At your leisure. Um, that we change going forward. Um.
Yeah, I mean, I think if we're going to use the Google Doc to. I then I guess the Google Doc needs to become the master. Uh, you see, then we have the issue of. In order to do all of the final formatting, I mean, the Google Doc doesn't even have page numbers in it. You can't search. It's just got to go back to Word in order to get this finished.
Yeah, my view is the Google Doc is a text repository. It does not handle figures well. It doesn't handle tables well. Um, in terms of, so it's a it's a text repository for those paragraphs of text that you will have to pour into a Word template and. That's how I view it. At least.
Yeah, but.
Because that's the only way. That's the only way we can all see the same thing and comment on it. Like if we, if we're each using your particular document, nobody else, and I make comments, nobody else is seeing those comments. There's no way to share them.
What it does, it means that the only time we can make comments is when we're in the meeting. Right?
I mean. That's why I'm proposing using a Google Doc, so that we don't aren't stuck that way.
Right. That's why, that's why we have to use Google Docs. I don't think there's anything else that works with that well. Okay, I think.
So I I guess just to summarize that, what I would suggest is. Well, I don't know. I mean, now we have some comments and edits in. In the Google Doc, we have all of your former comments still to go over, starting in Chapter Six in the Word Doc. I mean, we could make. We can go through starting on six in the in the Word Doc and then we'll make edits and then I will just transfer those into the Google Doc. I don't know if that makes, is that what you want?
I Barbara, um, you had done this. Where do you think you are? Would you, I mean. You're you and Ernie. No, Ernie is in charge of this tonight, Ernie and.
Barb.
Barb, right. Yeah, so the two of you are in charge of doing this tonight. Since you are. Would you rather work on the document that you have and then have uh, and then have Nan have in front of her, her old comments and tell us where she has comments?
Ernie is the leader, so I'm deferring to him.
Except if he says to go back to December 28th.
Yeah, that's that's a no-go.
Yeah, yeah.
This is what I'm going to suggest. I'm going to suggest that we. Take the document, the Google Doc that we've been working on right now. We're going to leave it to Jean to go back to Five.
Yeah.
And to fix it up.
I'm.
You're not going to look at Five again until Jean does her cleanup. We're going to move forward using the Google Doc. And have. Nan's thing on the other computer screen, which nobody, you know, somebody's going to have, that's going to be able to kind of say, oh, there were some comments about this paragraph. Let's talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, I I can put up my, well, if I share my screen and put up my Word document, then you won't, you all won't see this, the Google Doc. I think you can only share one screen at a time. Yeah. Yeah, but but I but I think I think Ernie's, I think Ernie's right that we should take, we should put on the on the shared screen, the Google Doc. Um, and then those of us who can should, you know, see seeing the Google Doc on the shared screen. Those of us who can or designate one person to keep Jan Nan's document open. Um, so that we can orally share what the comments are as we go through the different sections of the Google Doc.
I think Barb, you said you have two screens, right? You said you could do that.
I I well, I I have a big monitor, so I can see all.
Big monitor.
Okay, so who wants to share their their Google Doc?
I can't.
Not me, because then I can't see anything.
Right, not me, because I I have to do something to my computer to make it share on Zoom and it won't. I I haven't.
Well, I I can share the Google Doc.
There you go.
And um.
And then Barb, did you ever read Word document? Is that we decided?
Yeah, I've got the Word document.
I was looking for a file that I did not find, unfortunately, so.
For what it's worth, I made all of my changes on the Google Doc, so I pretty much ignored Nan's. Document.
Okay.
So let me see if I can, um. All right, so you, this is the Google Doc, right, that you're seeing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see here.
But we wanted, oh, the Google Doc, right, okay.
This is the Google Doc, starting at Chapter Six or Article Six. And then on my other screen. Uh, let me turn this, move this here, um. I have the. Word Doc, so I can just point out where there were comments.
Okay, awesome. Can you enlarge your screen a little bit? Nan?
Um, hold on, I'm, um. Uh, let's see, Google Doc. I don't know how to make it bigger here. Let's see.
We should all go to the courtyard grill and the dock. Not before you finish building the bucket.
I don't think you have a cow.
Um. I don't know how to, let's see, um.
It looks good on my screen.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, wait, here.
There you go. Hundred and twenty-five.
Well, it's already a hundred percent. How about a hundred and twenty-five percent?
Make it a hun- yeah, that's great. You can even make it bigger.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna say it's great.
Well, you won't be able to see any comments if you make it too big.
That that works pretty well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I I got it right here at open.
Okay. Okay, so Ernie and Barb.
I'm trying to find out where I am on the, we're trying to find the start of Article Six, right?
Yeah.
Okay, where is it?
There it's uh.
I'm spinning my way through here and I'm looking there. I can't read that screen.
Um. Um, Ernie, on my on my screen, it's showing as twenty-three of ninety-three.
Twenty-three of ninety-three.
And under insert, you can insert page numbers if you have.
Oh, I see. The page numbers are at the top.
Oh, yeah, here we go, twenty-three. Of ninety-three. Okay. Twenty-three. It's actually in twenty-two.
Yeah, it's the end of twenty-two.
Yeah, it starts at the bottom of twenty-two.
Okay, um. All right, so. I. I I don't know, you know, how do we want to do this? Do we want to just go through?
Why don't we do it by page? Is there anything on a page?
Um. Okay, so, you know, I mean, Barbara's got a comment over here that zoning commission had earlier agreed to use business and not commercial to avoid confusing this with commercial district. So there are some general edits to that effect.
Okay.
Um. There's, yeah, so uh. Okay, so then Michelle has a comment on, um.
The like, and so that this is the other issue is that, um. These are not. Easy to follow, like you have to find, like, if you click on.
They aren't.
You know, I can click, you can click on what what comment goes with what edit, you know, so it's. It's the uh, it's just very difficult.
Yeah, what I can tell you is the first comment I have is on Section 6.1B. Does anybody have anything before that?
Uh, actually, Michelle. Uh, actually, Michelle's is on six point one A. Um, she's deleted attractive, convenient and. Subjective, I, so I think it should be deleted.
I'm okay with that.
I agree, I agree with that deletion.
Yeah, I'm I'm in general totally in favor of getting rid of any sorts of adjectives that, um, are subjective.
It's about five lines down.
Yeah, it's right. It's already on the Google dot croc, Google dot crossed off, right here.
So then.
There, okay, so the next thing down was, uh, Bill had a comment, um. Let's see, uh.
The phrasing, all businesses in a district, and I was querying whether that included a home-based occupation, it would seem to. Whereas the rest of the paragraph talks about things needing site plan review or special use permit. And obviously Barb responded that she would suggest they not apply to home occupations. And then she added some language, the last sentence to that, or a footnote, I guess, to that effect. Is that what that is there, Barb?
No, I I added, I added a final sentence to the to be to the paragraph B. Standards in section six point one do not apply to home occupations.
Right, that the, that is true. These do not apply to home occup, none of these apply to home occupations.
Okay, great. And I was just wanting to clarify this, when it says all businesses, and I just thought it might be good to make clear to the community, therefore. That all businesses did not include home occupations, which that sentence sounds a little bit more elegant way.
Okay.
So you you had, um, the, from the earlier comments, someone had commented that. Um, here where we use the word in including commercial franchise. Um, or formula business, the earlier comment was, um. That, um, Ernie objected of in the December version to the design elements, um. And. My comment was when you, when you start going through this section and apply design standards. Um, or take out design standards, whatever you decide, I just wanted to point out that one of the major. Um, discussions early on was how do we address franchise businesses? And you do that with these design standards. So I just wanted to point out that that was a comment from the December. About, you know, not wanting design standards, and then my question back to you is if you don't have design standards, how do you get at? Commercial franchise or formula-based businesses then?
Well, I mean, have we decided that 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 is the enemy and that we have to to ban them from our premises?
If you're not banning them.
There's no ban on them, I mean, they're allowed in certain hamlets. The question is their appearance. And one of the objections to them was that every McDonald's looks like every McDonald's, every Dollar General looks like a Dollar General, every star, you know. So that one of the things the community voiced that it wanted in the past was that they be more unique to Caroline.
So, yeah, so I think as you go along.
Be designed in a way that fit in, that did not use its trademark architecture design, but instead tried to look like a piece of Caroline.
And that is done in other communities and other states.
I I would say if you've ever gone, if you've ever gone to Vermont, the Dollar Generals look nothing like the Dollar Generals you see here.
I just, I'm, I'm just kind of, you know, objecting to the gentrification of of every aspect of of our landscape. You know, I don't know, I I mean, I I I guess.
Gentrification, I want it to look like a farmhouse.
Well, yeah, everybody wants to look like a farmhouse.
What if Dollar General wants to put a trailer up then? That's fine.
Well, they they can't. They wouldn't.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, trailer. Well, no, anyway. I'll just say, I personally don't have any objections to Dollar Generals not looking, uh, the way they do every place else. I don't see the problem with having design standards for formula businesses. Um, now, I mean, further further on in the document, we could take out some of the, and I think we have. Uh, we could take out some of the things, some of the objections to say concrete blocks or whatever. We don't have to make the design standards so stringent as we may have before we edited it. But I don't see any problem with having design standards.
Well, why don't you, why don't you go, I I only wanted to bring that up because that was one of your earlier comments. So as you go through this section, that's the kind of underlying, you know. Foundational discussion to think about as you go through, you know, context and compatibility. And, you know, later on, when we get into building placement and design and all of the things that were in the site plan. These all came from the task force's site plan, um, work. So I, you know, that's what you need to discuss as you go line by line here. That's the underlying principle of of concerns that were raised in the December document.
And 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 just to reiterate that, one of the, one of the major themes that came out of the work of the task force. Um, was particularly, um, you know, reacting, responding to public comment about formula businesses. Um, yes, there were were some residents of the town who didn't want formula businesses, but. Uh, what the message that came out loud and clear was that formula businesses, um, could be allowed in some areas, which we've done in the use table. But when formula businesses are allowed, um, they should not be allowed to have their standard, uh, trademark appearance. Um, and that came very, very loud and clear through the task force and through other discussions that have been had. So I feel strongly that we need to, uh, keep that language within the the draft law.
I I, I think we're sort of having this argument, but what we really need to do is like, look at the language. So let's try to proceed on the language with this in our background and see what.
Jean, I agree, I think Ernie's point is he would throw out all design standards, I think, you know, design.
I I would get rid of a lot of, um.
Yeah, well, let's let's do it line by line then.
Yeah, let's see, we did get rid of a lot, so.
Can, can you turn down her microphone a little bit? It's it's in the verge of distorting at this end, it's very disturbing.
Oh, my microphone?
Yes. Your mic is loud.
Oh, um.
In in particular, it's overdriven, so it gets buzzy, and that's what Ernie's objection. There are manual controls for the mic and Zoom, but I don't know how to access them. Let's figure it out.
Okay, so let's, let's.
Alright, is that better?
Yes.
Yes.
With, um, context and I think everyone seemed to agree with the addition of that sentence in B. So let's go on to context and compatibility.
So I think I have a comment there, but I can't see it.
And and I did too.
Um.
That's mine there.
This is Bill's and this is Michelle's.
So I can summarize quickly rather than have Ernie have to read that, but basically. In at least one of the, you know, um, Zoom information meetings, and I'm getting blanking on the name of the gentleman who owns celebrations. Uh, was complaining or or, you know, critiquing that that general language like, oh. Should have a nice appearance or fits in has been used in the past to cause segregation. And so I wanted to make sure we were not leaving a loophole here where some. Person down the line, I don't expect the current review board would try to do this, would use the language in here to somehow segregate Caroline. I personally am comfortable with the language here. I think Nan's did a good job keeping things relatively narrow and focused as to what is meant by compatible. Um, but that's, I just wanted the zoning commission to discuss this, because it was probably a concern a resident raised. I think it's a a valid point and a critique of past zoning, so I want to make sure we aren't treading into bad areas here. So that was a general comment. We can't have to look at each one in particular, I suppose.
Yeah, actually, I forget what my comment was there. I can't see it.
Yeah, it's, um, this one, and you just wanted to simplify this sentence.
Yeah, Mi- Michelle, your comment, though, was before I added where the deletions were that had already been made. So that might address your comment.
Well, I think I wonder about the modern materials thing, um. I don't know if we want to, and I think Jean had a comment about the modern materials also, right?
Um, I did, I, uh, changed, I. I spelled hardy board hardened board because hardy is a, it's a trademark name. And I also said, I mean, some, that I think there are a lot of non-traditional materials that are more energy efficient, so I don't have an issue with. Energy efficient materials.
So so I think my comment is mainly, do we need all, maybe we just say that the material should be consistent with area building design or something. I I can't read what I wrote, but I.
Well, um, you like what it says now. I mean, basically, it now says using materials appearing similar to clavoured shingle boarding that and sightings. Or modern materials that mimic traditional building materials. That's sticking with the traditional kind of design for commercial. But I'll think that, um.
What are we trying to get away from, I guess? We don't want to see cement block. We don't want to see.
Yeah.
Stucco, we don't want to see, um. I don't know, can't, can't, you know, uh. Can't can't think of what the materials are, the.
Metal side, test or shingles.
Metal siding.
Metal siding. We don't want to see metals, metal siding, there's there's part of the character of.
I, I, I would consider metal siding to be a fairly typical, uh, building material in Caroline. I think it would be hard to say that something that did that didn't fit in.
Well, that goes back to what, uh, Michelle said is this, she recommended the sentence. Materials should be harmonious with area building design and town character and leave off the other things.
Yeah, that 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 was my suggestion, rather than being so specific about which the materials should be. I don't think that's, I don't see what's the point. I don't think that's necessary to be so. Specific about which materials we're gonna accept. There's a lot of materials, I think that. I don't know, there's a lot of, I happen to know personally, a lot of architects, several architects that love concrete, and they want to use it on everything. And it can be quite attractive, so, um.
And we, and we've had this discussion before.
And we have had this discussion before.
And and we, and we've had this discussion before where we agreed that that metal metal siding would be appropriate. And it does appear actually on many, um, on many town buildings. Um, and is more efficient and effective than some other materials, so. Uh, yes, I think, uh, I would agree that this can be modified.
So I'm.
What about just this first part? Materials should be consistent with area building design and character of the town, period.
I would stop there. I think that's, that's enough, but that's my opinion.
Okay.
I can't hear what's Ernie saying.
I I said, I agree with Nan.
Okay. And and is that clear enough that the review board is not gonna say, oh, that's putting too much of a burden on us?
Well, I'm sorry, you know.
We can't worry about them, they're.
Alright, so number five got deleted by mistake. Is that gotta get?
Um.
Ah, excellent.
So, so is Barb making the changes as we go through? Is that?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Um, alright.
Now, and Barb has actually made the change, it's not showing as a strikeout, is that?
I, yeah, I don't know why that is.
Um, I, well, I think that they don't do reviewing the same way in Google Doc. Um, you could add a font style to strike it out, but I don't know if you want to go through all that labor.
I mean, in the end, when you go back, I mean, you're not gonna show the public all these deletions. You're just gonna show them a new, you're gonna be moving forward with a new clean document. So I'm not sure if you've made your decision, delete it, and. The next version is gonna be a clean version that's gonna show all these things.
Yeah, and and I said, I would, I would be comfortable with that, but it's, you know. It's if we ever want to, I can second guess ourselves, but.
Yeah, so when, when I make, when I make a deletion, it shows as a deletion. So someone else, uh, got to the deletion before I hit the key and it all disappeared, so I don't know what setting they're using.
Okay, so it has to be, um, that you're set as a commentator. So let's see.
Okay, yeah, I see it has now worked.
Right, okay.
I personally find all these cross out parts really confusing. Like, I would just assume if we need to delete something, we just delete it, but. Again, my opinion.
Let's, let's do this, um, as we go along and then make sure that we go to the end and say, is everyone happy with the changes we've made in this document? So I, as of right now, that's deleted and as we move along or even by section. But I don't want us to some, say, somebody to go, oh, no, I want to go back to this and it's not there. So if it's, now we crossed it out and that seems fine.
Okay.
Okay, so, five.
Nobody commented.
Good.
On the six. Uh, design standards, see, whose comment is this one? This is, uh.
That's Michelle, yeah, and and that that, I think your comment came. After, I mean, yes, the agricultural businesses cannot be regulated for design standards. So that, that was an error, that, so that should be crossed out the way it's shown there.
Okay.
Somebody's doing that.
So, um, so one comment here would be to, uh, delete in the final sentence. Um, including Gampro Roos wood siding in a traditional appearance, because we just said that wood siding wouldn't be a thing. Or we could just delete that whole last sentence.
I think we can get rid of the whole last sentence. Does that sound fine?
I'm I'm in favor of getting rid of that whole lesson.
Okay.
Do that. Okay.
So what does this mean? I mean, design standards for non-resident uses and agricultural zoning district are established to ensure the character of the buildings used. Protect the rural character of the area. It's just, it's just a statement, it's not.
Yeah, good point.
I mean, what, what's, and why is it there at all, I guess, is, you know, I would delete the whole thing.
Yeah, that's, that's true. I think, I think Ernie, um, what's under C, context and compatibility above. Um, kind of says, says the same idea, so we can get rid of number six.
Okay, I'm going to do that then.
Yeah, I know, because without the last sentence, I agree with Ernie, the first thing is a nothing, so, sure.
Okay. Okay, then we have done that. So, section six point two, design standards for commercial uses. But we're not saying, are we saying commercial here or should we be saying business?
Business, right?
Is that what they, is that what that, is that what we're doing?
Well, that's what we had said at the very beginning of this, of this, that we were saying business, so as not to confuse people with.
But then I guess. The home business.
You're now calling it the focus district, so.
Isn't it, I mean, this, this originally was in the site, um, the task force site plan review section. So it would be, the way it was originally was anything that requires site plan review. And I moved that section into its own section because. That is the part of site plan that dangerously straddles, you know. Not really site plan review, it's really zoning, so that's why I moved it into its own section. So it wasn't meant for just like retail or business uses. The way you had it originally was as part of whatever was going through site plan review, as far as I recall. It was designed, design standards for site plan review.
So Nan, let me ask the, sort of the inverse question then, as it is now in this document. It would apply to a business or commercial use, even if we're not going through site plan review. That is something maybe that did not meet the three thousand square foot threshold.
Um, I guess it depends, um, let me go back to applicability. Now it says, um. The standards in this section shall apply to all development activities required to have site plan approval. So it's only, um, site plan approval pursuant to the use table, um, or special uses. So, um, it shall not apply to uses requiring abbreviated site plan approval. All businesses, yeah, all businesses in any district, including, um, the commercial franchise or formula businesses. Shall also meet the citing and design standards, and that's where you added, except for home occupations.
Okay, good, so we're safe.
Go back to my question of the, of the, uh, title of the section six point two. Is it design standards for commercial uses or business uses?
Well, if you go back, let me just go back what we had, what we had, what I had done. Well, if you go back, let me just go back what we had, what we had, what I had done. General standards for non-residential, oh, you changed that and business.
Right. People decide, our reasoning and changing that to business was that people were afraid that we would consider that. We would think that was just things in the commercial districts, which it isn't. So.
I mean, is there a legal difference between a business and a commercial? Enterprise?
I don't know what that would be.
Yeah, I think it's a language.
Then we could probably say business uses and be consistent.
Okay, I'm going to change this to business uses then. Okay, and then let's go on to building placement and design.
Okay, so this comment was made by Michelle, uh, seems to repeat the previous section. The architecture design details about building or structures must be compatible with general and architectural features of such existing structures. Yeah, it does seem redundant.
I kind of thought that too, but I thought maybe I didn't understand as well.
Build is, as I said, building placement and design. So, you know, the, the paragraphs before are.
More about design.
Well, this is.
Appearance.
Are these in the same section? I'm just trying to hear how this is organized.
They're not. These are in generals, that, the first one is general standards.
Applicability. Context and compatibility.
Yeah, and this one is specific. Um, you know, the, the, I mean, they could continue, I, 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 they. Task force had this in its own section. If you want to continue it and make this. Uh, D. Um, you know, we could change the numbering and organization of this, but. This was a section specifically oriented to building placement in design and all the other things on here. You know, there is, there is repetition. If, if it repeats. You know, I, I personally have no problem with repeating. It does add, you know, clarity. On the other hand, it adds text.
So essentially, number one is kind of the general. It's the thematic sentence and then the others, two, three and four are very specific.
Couldn't you just put a period after structures, leave out and turn more material, then station roof shape, scale type of construction?
I don't.
Cause that's what we did.
No, we didn't do those things in number one. We didn't do anything about landscaping. For instance, and roof shape and still, I don't, I don't have a problem with number one. I think it kind of. Is that it's the topic sentence.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, I'm, I'm okay with leaving it.
I'm fine with leaving it.
Not worth harvesting out every.
So I guess, well, anyway.
Okay.
You can acknowledge that my, my. Comment is irrelevant or.
Okay, um, so the next thing is one principal building is allowed along the frontage. And with all accessory buildings placed to the rear or side, when set back at least twenty feet from the principal building.
Uh, and.
I mean, I don't see any comments on this section.
Yeah, there's no other comments, uh, till we get to the next section. Or no, down two more sections down here.
I guess I would comment about that one nonetheless. What's the reasoning here?
To get emergency vehicles between buildings? I would assume, I mean, you can ask the members of the task force, but that's typically why those are. When you have accessory buildings, you know, that are, um. You know, they're usually not. I suppose they could be right next to the building, but if they're in between and you can't get a vehicle around them, that's. You know, could be a safety issue.
Yes, that, that was included in there for access issues.
Okay.
Okay, and then it's. So there's.
Then we have building footprint shall be as per. Who? No trademarked architecture will be allowed. Okay, so that's in six point three. We'll get to that, right? We're getting to that.
Yeah.
So it's okay. Uh, should be clearly defined and scale as building related to public health. Whether have weather covered, walkways are adjacent to the building should not be covered. Okay, plane shall have a minimum slope of four and twelve. Yeah, my comment, as I recall, was that it's interesting that on the picture that showed up on this page. Was of a building that had a three and twelve roof. It's that. Yeah, so I'm jet, adapting to this. Basically. I think we're trying to.
So, so do we not need to specify? I mean, we've said elsewhere, I think somewhere, flat roofs have to be avoided, I think, or something like that. But Ernie, do you have a suggested minimum pitch or do you think we don't want to specify any minimum pitch?
Why wouldn't the flat roof be allowed?
I think it was to get away, and it's a good, maybe Barbara may not going to help me, but to get away from basically like, you know. A large sort of like big lot store. Appearance.
Yeah, I think, I think that was the reasoning and we can, um, circle back. We can take a look at, um, the. Formula business section, um, and see if, uh, that's covered enough in there and then we can come back here and. Uh, you know, consider deleting this.
Quite a few residential homes with flat roofs.
Well, that's.
Yeah, this is commercial though.
Yeah.
So, so now I just.
I'm putting in a little yellow section here to think about coming back.
We don't have to. I'm just going to point out that I think it's owners. So.
You think it's what?
Owners.
Oh, for a business. Per, I mean, I think businesses, that they're a business, right? They have to do what's necessary. It's not like we're putting these restrictions on. People with their own homes. It's a business. It's a company. It's a corporation.
Yeah.
They've got money.
They're perfectly reasonable buildings that have flat roofs. I mean, you go to Truman'sburg.
But, but I guess the question goes back to that very first question is what is the character? In your town. It doesn't matter what's in Truman'sburg. It's what, you know, you have. Buildings in the hamlets that are slightly different than buildings elsewhere, but. What would go in Caroline? You could wave the magic. Planning lawn. You know, would you want a flat roof box building for a, a commercial building? On Route seventy nine or anywhere else? That's, that's the question.
Yep, I, Bruce just pointed out that Brooklyndale Community Center is flat roof.
Well, I was going to mention that too, but you know, so, I mean, so there are, as Dan pointed out, some that are not like that. You know, it's a question of whether, what sort of the majority character and maybe we need to drive around some, but. I think there's not a lot of commercial buildings with flat roofs. There are not a lot of commercial buildings, period.
Right. So we change this to business, but we're talking commercial.
Business, commercial, same, same difference. And if President's Committee, those are the same.
Okay, yeah. Um, let's, as I said, let's look at the. Formula businesses and then come back to this after we remove that out. And let's go on to massing. And I, my only question about massing was, is the fifteen hundred feet? Um, is that what we agreed to? I couldn't remember fifteen hundred feet was what we had in another section.
No, that, that's straight from the task force. I don't think we've ever talked about having to break. We, we're allowing larger building footprints in certain districts.
Okay.
Yeah, this doesn't mean the building is limited to fifteen hundred square feet. It means that the design. Has to make a big building have some architectural feature that breaks that big. You know, flat facade up.
Right, okay. I just didn't want us to, like, I didn't want us to say something about twelve fifty somewhere else and then have this. Hundred and have some confusion.
No, and I, I think they use as an example, the, I think on that page is a photo of, um, is it the livery, you know, that has?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
So that's the example.
Okay.
Which is a pretty hideous piece of architecture, if you want my personal.
But, but it has charm. It's part of Caroline.
Right.
All, all the attributes of Caroline, all of them.
All of them. The good, the bad and the ugly.
And some flat roof.
Okay, so we have, uh, no one seems to object to anything in massing except. And so materials.
Okay, so now we're back.
That's what I find duplicative. I mean, that's essentially saying exactly what was said earlier, but maybe it's fine to repeat it. I mean, except we should change it. You know, because there we just said, or other modern materials that look like these or something.
Yeah.
Ex- except we deleted that. Uh, what we have now says materials in the section above says materials should be consistent. With area building design and the character of the town.
So.
Yeah, why, why do we need to repeat this though?
Yeah, I think this goes away unless there's anything more. I, I see one, two and three, two and three being struck. Is there something else below three that we can't see yet?
No, so that, this is it. So we can just delete this whole section.
I think so, because we've handled materials earlier.
Right.
Yeah.
So we are deleting this section. Which would then make the next section.
Yeah, we'll have to, I have, I made a note to change the numbers.
Okay.
There.
Okay.
And I love the word penetration because you don't get to use it very often.
I also, I also like defenestration.
I, I. I have never penetrated myself, but.
So in this, in this section one here, where we're talking about public facing facades with fifteen percent. Ernie noted in the original comments that, um, energy efficient buildings strive for less than fifteen percent.
That's, that's.
Yeah, and I had added a comment that looks like Barb is now incorporating in the text that, that similar to above, we could say that indeed, that exceptions to that rule. Could be made if someone's doing it for the purpose of energy efficiency.
I like that.
Or for a highly efficient design or whatever, you know, as it says there. People like that change?
Yeah, I like it. I like it.
Yeah, I just, you know, the. I don't know, you know, what kinds of businesses might accrue here, but you know, certain industrial uses and stuff. You know, might not need windows to the interior that. So that, you know, have an internally lit display area, um. I, I, you know, so I don't know what they're getting at here with the window shall be real functional clear glass window with views into the build. People might not want that.
Yeah, I mean, and there's a lot of, a lot of like, you know, you look at CBS and Walgreens, um, in, in many villages. They put in. Windows. That aren't real. I mean, they're real windows, but they're not functioning in terms of you can open them and the, the display. Is right behind. So I think the, the notion, at least from what I'm re, what I'm thinking, the task force was thinking is that. You don't want blank walls and windowless walls facing the street. And so you want windows. I don't know if they need to be real. They need to be, I mean, I don't know if they need to be functional. They need to be real glass windows.
Right, but, but they. With views into the building. Or to an internally lit display area. I, you know, your business doesn't have something to display. I guess.
A machine shop.
Yeah, right, whatever. Um, yeah, so I guess it's just. You know, one of these things that if it's a requirement. Um. Then it's going to come up in somebody's site plan review and they're going to be sitting there saying, you know, why do I need to be putting windows in my machine shop? Um, you know, I'm going to have a lady sitting there stealing oil all over it. Um, you know, what, you know, what, what, what does the review board say? Um.
Well, maybe. Put a period after windows then and, and cross out the with views into the building or internally lit display area.
I think it could be left out, Michelle.
Well, I, you know, I guess the idea was to avoid someone sort of cheating on the idea of there being a window, just putting some like a piece of glass against a brick wall saying, here, there's my window, right? So hence the task force said it's got to be a real window. Um, I'm understanding Ernie, you might not need, I don't, the need for a view into the building. I think it was just a way of quantifying or trying to specify what was meant by a real window. Um, if you really have better language, I'm all for it. You know.
My suggestion is to say in retail or service businesses. And then avoiding the industrial.
Yeah. No, I mean. You know, I understand, you know, what we're trying to do is break up facade, put some windows in, you know, kind of. You know, make the building massive and disappear, you know, and then. Put big roofs on it to kind of, you know, create a, an aesthetic here. Um. But I think that we have to be careful about. You know, forcing the aesthetic. And, and, you know. If people don't try to. Build ugly buildings. That's my, at least my, my, you know, general feeling is, is that, you know, the. The stuff that really, you know. Botheres people is generally stuff that has, um, you know, some, some architects. Ego involved, um, and they're just normal people going about their business. Um, so, um. You know, I just. I just want to be careful of. Trying to, you know, tell people how to design their buildings.
Well, what would you do in this sentence?
I would say, you know. Say it has a window area of at least fifteen percent of, except for exceptions for. Design or, you know. Exceptions, something says buildings should have fifteen percent of the facade. The front facade in window or be able to explain why they don't. And whether they have to be real and have. Views in the interior or.
So what I'm hearing is a motion to strike the last sentence.
Yes, that would be my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. That's fine with me.
Um, all in favor?
Fine.
Okay, but it looks like that's passed. Any opposed?
No, but Ernie, a bunch of fake windows get built in this town. I'm coming to your house.
It'll be all on you.
No, seriously, i- if it becomes a problem, which I think it probably will not, then the town can revisit the issue.
Yes.
Okay, section six point six canopies. Uh, drive here or drive under canopies shall draw on the design traditions of the town of Caroline. I don't actually know. Do we have any canopies?
Uh, that, that was kind of my comment. I said, I'd like to see an example of what they're talking, what we're talking about here.
Well, there was a picture, um, in the original, there's a picture of celebrations bank hall.
Right. I mean, also the, the gas station has essentially a canopy or something over the pumps, right? But yeah, the celebrations was a classic example. It's one of the probably two in the town.
Okay, canopy, so, so can leave that canopy shall have a pitched roof, nothing else. And that seems to be. I didn't know what. Um.
So.
Canopy support should be visually designed. I didn't know what that meant.
That's a really good question.
What does that mean?
It's supposed to orally.
Maybe we could just be, should be proportional to the roof structure. I mean, I think someone's. I, and I don't know if I care that much about it. I mean, again, the idea is that you don't get some big honking column holding up this diminutive little canopy. I don't know if I care. Um, so, but that was, I think, where that was coming from, but, uh, I'm, I'm okay with deleting number four.
Okay.
And, and like the canopy should have a pitch roof. I think it's a good idea. I don't know, for example, if that, if the cover over the gas station's things, pumps does have a pitched roof.
No, they're flat.
They seldom do.
Yeah, no, they're almost always just, uh, uh, flat roof that brings, brings to a gutter system on the side. Then goes down through the middle of the two piers that hold the thing up.
Right.
Um. And, uh, and they're there. I mean, they're, they're first pressure, depression stuff in usually. Um, in fact, I think they're required for some instances. I don't know that for a fact, but I imagine there's some sort. Government regulation. You know anything about that, Nan? You know?
Um, there are, there are standard designs for canopies, but. Um. It doesn't dictate that they have to be a flat roof, you know, a flat version. There's, there's plenty of other places that have. Require more of an architectural feature of the gas pump canopy or of any kind of. require more of an architectural feature of the gas pump canopy or of any kind of canopy um, that matches the building. Cause you can have, you know, we've all seen these really nice, you know, each Stewart's is building a lot of nice buildings. And they plunk the gas canopy right out in front that, you know, this is totally not consistent with the building they just built.
But they, but those I think are regulated. I think that when you have a certain number of pumps, you're required to have a fire suppression canopy over the, over the pumps. And, and they're so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree that there, that you don't need a canopy. The question is, does it, does it have to be the canopy that they build that the flat roof standard stock? I think that's what this was trying to get at.
Yeah, but I think that, that, you know, that these things have to be pretty high because you got to get these big trucks and whatnot, you know, RVs or put a pitch group on the top of that thing, it would be such an eyesore that nobody wants that. Um, so they're bad enough just being kind of minimalist structures that they are. But to force them to have a pitched roof would just make them worse.
You, you create all kinds of problems as part of runoff too.
Those are two, but, you know, so I guess that I'm, I'm just, I'm just playing devil's advocate here, you know, it's just, you know, let's not require stuff that's going to create problems for us down the road. Because it's just not a reasonable ask.
Well, is there a situation besides a gas station in which requiring a pitched roof would seem to be an issue?
No. I would say canopies should have a pitch road. Or using our, our vague languages as opposed to the shall word. Um, or just get rid of that entirely and or you say canopy shall have a roof compatible with the surrounding architecture.
So that's number three.
Yeah, okay, so I'll just leave number two out of it and then, uh, and then go and just leave number three as being the coverall.
Now I'm the review board, someone comes to me with a, a flat roof canopy. Can I use this to say, hey, no, your main building has a pitched roof, so you should make your canopy have a pitched roof also?
You should certainly as a suggestion, but.
And they say, no, I don't want to. As opposed to a gas station, which might argue, you know, this thing is so fricking tall as it is, I really think it'd be a bad idea to put a pitched roof on it because then it's going to be a gargantuan bigger than any buildings in the area. That I get is a reason, but if the person, if the applicant does not have a reason other than I don't wanna, does the review board have the leg to stand on here?
I would think so, just because of, of how it's going to work.
Okay, the shall be designed to be visually compatible is enough ammunition for him. It's a question for Nana's between anybody, but.
Ability to make the developers life very difficult. And so it's a game of going back and forth. It's like, okay, well, if you do that, then we'll do that, let you do this, you know, it's not, you know, nobody's going to go to court over the, the roof pitch thing here. But I just think, you know, it's, it's just again, just one of those things to, if we don't need it in the law for a particular reason, you know, let's, uh, let's, let's not do it.
I, I'm hearing that as a motion. Do I have a second to that?
I'll second it.
What is the motion?
Delete number two.
Pitched roof canopies.
And I have a second. Do I have any, um, anyone who wants to speak to that point? All in favor of that? Say aye. Any opposed? The nays have it, it's in.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I am on the review board and if they came to the review board and wanted to put in a flat roof, it's our job to suggest to them the reasons why they wouldn't want to use a flat roof and so on and so forth.
I'm going to make an alternate suggestion that say canopy shall have a pitched roof unless uh, there is an excellent design reason, there's a, a strong reason not to.
I know, I just, I mean, you know, all of these things are negotiable.
Okay.
Reasonable review board, all of this stuff is negotiable.
Okay, so then we have three and we have four in which we've taken out the visually designed since we didn't know what it meant. Okay, so we're going on to section two point seven, permanent signage, which has wall sign elements, right? Nan, do you have a question?
No, I just wanted to pipe in that the, um, one of the original, uh, comments was that Barb recommended not regulating temporary signs. Ernie recommended defining temporary signs and as a result of the in unsure of whether this affected temporary or permanent signs, um, uh, or, or what we're defining it. I, I added in the word permanent. So these are related to permanent signs, not, you know, banners that you put out for a sale or, you know, anything like that.
Or when something's being built or something like that. Okay. Okay, so the, um, the first comment that we get down to is no taller than eight feet above finished grade. I guess that was a change from six to eight.
That was what Barb and I had suggested and we talked about that and everybody, I think.
Yeah.
That was okay.
Okay. Um, then we have, Nan, you have a comment on number three under where it says type.
Um, yeah, that was your, I think that was yours.
Oh, it's mine.
Oh, maybe it's Barb's.
No, that's, that's Jean. Clearly not building mounted signs.
Right.
So ample landscaping shall provide that the base of signs of any type doesn't actually work because.
Yeah, so that's, uh.
At the base of ground mounted signs or something.
Okay, so how about that? Ground mounted, ground.
That sounds good.
Ground mounted signs. Okay, and we get rid of any type. Okay. Digital signs are prohibited in all districts. No one had a comment. The maximum sign.
And is there one quick aside? So Nan, when you do this in the word thing, I mean, there are these like bullet point circles here, which don't fit with the formatting of the rest of the document. Is that kind of stuff you're going to fix at some point in the word version?
Where is that comment?
Well, there's no comment, but I mean, if you scroll up, you, I'm making it now. You sort of, you know.
Oh, yes, I, yeah, you, I'll change though. I, I don't have them. They're both, they're still bullet points, but I could change them to ABCs.
Yeah, something, just consistency. That's all I'm asking for.
Yes, yep, okay.
Okay, so then we go to.
Maximum size of any permanent size, we changed that from fifty feet to twenty-four square feet.
Nan and Barb both suggested replacing that. I think twenty-four square feet is fine. As I noted before, I think that is about the size of the sign in front of the Brooksendale Fire Hall. Although it might be four feet by eight feet, thirty-two square feet.
Yeah, that's, that's me. Cause I was standing next to that thing the other day and I wish I'd measured it.
I am, I am hopeless at knowing how big things are, so I don't know.
Yeah, twenty-four is not huge. I think, uh,
I mean, I, I would tend to go more with the thirty-two, which is, you know, not that anyone's ever going to put up a four by eight sheet of plywood, but you know, but, or thirty, I don't care.
Yeah, thirty-two feet, one, one sheet of plywood. I would go with that.
Okay. So we're going to change twenty-four to thirty-two.
Common sign size in this town, I've noticed.
Okay, no one had a saw. Okay, um, I'm going to get rid of the space, I see. We're up to number eight. All billboard signs are prohibited. And I think I may have written in here that I, I don't have a, I don't actually. We have some billboards along seventy-nine and I guess I think of them as a, something that farmers can make some money from. I don't have a giant objection to them. I don't love them. I am, but I am neutral about them. How do other people feel?
I hate them. Doesn't mean I want to regulate them, but.
Well, this is a question of regulation. So how do people feel?
Yeah, I, I don't feel we should.
I mean, I, I was, when I was looking through the assessment database, there were a number of commercial properties and I was surprised that some of them were they were like combined residential, commercial, and it was because there was a billboard on the property and that was a commercial use of, you know, I, I, you know, at any rate, there's only a few. Um, I frankly, yeah, would actually prefer not to see more, though I am sensitive Bruce's concern about the fact that maybe it's an allowable use along seventy-nine. So I think it's worth, worth our discussion, but I personally would say no billboards.
I, I don't mind the ones that are there because I'm used to them, but I also would not want more billboards. So. So I guess.
So billboards that are there are grandfathered in. It's a, it's it's a, a use, you're suggesting that we say that there can be no doom ball boards.
Well, by putting it in here, that's what that means.
Right, right.
The existing ones can continue.
Yeah, so, so yeah, I guess I would say that they're prohibited because we don't want anymore.
If you drive up ninety-six from Candor, then just look at the number of billboards that there are all the way coming into town from that direction. It's, it's, it's not pretty.
Okay, I don't see any, I think Bruce, it's you and me and, okay, so, uh, so we're leaving that. Section six point two eight, parking, parking shovel located to the rear or side of a commercial building. I think we're going to just leave commercial here. Is that fine? Cause that's what we're talking about, but it's.
That's fine.
Okay. Uh, nothing else has a comment until.
And I think the main discussion had to do with landscaping. There were various comments in the previous documents and some comments from Nan and.
Yes, it's number six.
Yeah, for lots greater than fifteen cars, landscaping, including trees, shrubs and other plant material shall be provided to cover at least fifteen percent of the parking lot area.
So that's a planting island every five spaces and what, just kind of trying to think of how that, how that's accomplished.
Well, it says it could be at entryways, parking and islands, um, one deciduous tree per six parking spaces. So it goes on to kind of explain what that would be, I think.
Oh, it does?
Yeah, one deciduous tree per six parking spaces require large expanses of parking shall be broken up with tree and shrub plantings. So this is for a lot greater than fifteen cars, so.
We were having the discussion via the, the Brooksendale market, whether they had fifteen car parking there or not. Which we never did determine, but.
Um, actually, let's see. They probably do because they also have a parking in the back for apartments.
It's close. I mean, for the market, because some of those are for residents.
Right.
So, yeah, sure.
But this is for lots greater than fifteen cars. I would.
I mean, overall, I think the, what the notion that the task force included is I think parking lots that don't have any landscaping, um, significantly changes a lot of things visually, um, the, it, it, it addresses, um, you know, it's an environmental thing. It's a, it's a climate thing. A lot of times parking lots are now built with the rain gardens as the, you know, along the edges or as planting islands. So it's part of the drainage system if it's big enough. Um, I just think parking lots are very impactful from a character point of view, and that's, I suspect why this is in here.
Yeah, no, I.
Are we happy with the fifteen cars?
I think, I think, I think we.
Okay, good. Okay, so there's nothing else in here that has a comment on it. Lighting standards.
Other comments in the original document that we're just going to glossing over here is just.
Yeah, no, not yet.
Okay.
Okay.
Something coming up and.
Um, two, two point one one on our two, now two point one oh rooftop equipment. There's a question.
Okay, right, that was, um, Bill's was discussed and Bruce in his December review also question number one.
Yeah, and, and what I did is I threw in a few things before Barb, there are fixes to make sure that we remember to look at the notes from the previous document. So that discuss was triggered by the fact that Bruce was concerned about this issue. That's, and I think it merits discussion by the zoning commission.
So this is antenna. I keep wanting to say antenna, but I guess I can't. Satellite dish is another mechanical equipment on a roof shall not be visible from public roadways. Okay, so Bruce, what was your issue about this?
I just was thinking, there's, it'd be pretty tough to not have it visible.
Yeah.
HVAC stuff. I mean, I think it might be, you know, should be screened from, from public roadways. Instead of saying not be visible, I think that that's just maybe a little bit too severe.
So let, let me put this in and see what people think of that. Shall be screened from public roadways. Generally, that means you have something like, um, a facade on the building or something.
It should be like views of, I can't see it now, views of antennas.
I see. Views of.
Number two says screening of rooftop equipment is required.
Oh, well, there we go.
Ah, so then maybe we can get rid of number one. Shall we get rid of number one since number two says that?
Or get rid of number two, now that you wordsmithed number one.
Either way.
Yeah, let's get rid of number two.
Yeah, you don't need, you don't need both.
Okay.
I love deleting things.
It's a, it's very fun.
Struck and white.
Yes.
Right.
I love that book. It's only like, I don't know, seventy pages. It's quite fabulous. Okay, lighting.
And, and in this one, the comment, um, from the original was, um, oh, it was just to note that the dark sky compliant was added to the definition. So that, that is in there and I checked to make sure that was indeed in there.
Okay. I'm just getting rid of the spaces when I see them. Okay, so it let, seems fine. Landscaping, we will go on to.
So on, on landscaping, uh, the strikeout of twenty-five to thirty feet on center in number two was in, uh, the July, uh, Nan's document. So that had already been, been discussed by the CC.
Okay, so street trees shall be planted with spacing appropriate to their mature sizes, growth species, and at least thirty inches from the edge of any paved surface. That sounds good.
And, um, just so, just to remind Bruce that you had originally commented that it may be irrelevant now because we took that out, but you had suggested uh, forty-two inches and then for number three, where it says six feet in height at the time of planting, you suggested four feet at, in height. So I think we already dealt with by taking this out.
Yeah.
But, but the six feet or the six, yeah, six feet down here was Bruce had a suggestion, change that to four.
Well, the, just, just a correction. And number two, I think Bruce had suggested, um, the last sentence say at least forty-two inches from the edge of any paved surface.
Oh, right, right, right.
Is there a biological reason for that, Bruce?
That's just because roots, thirty inches is nothing.
Yeah, no, but I, I would point out that, you know, in parking lot design, you know, islands are very commonly five feet wide, which would be
Right.
Thirty inch. Clearance, so.
Sounds like you're arguing, Ernie, that it should be thirty inches. Cause.
Well, it should be at least thirty inches for heaven's sakes, but whether we make it more, I don't know. I don't care.
I mean, but if someone came and had a good reason for forty-two inches, it says at least thirty. So, you know, that would be, that would be fine.
Yep.
Okay.
And then the next one was to be changed, the height of, um, the, the hedge or screening from four feet, from six feet to four feet. And that just means that it's going to take no longer to be a screen, you know, an effective screen.
I think that's reasonable because of the cost of planting.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then it says plants and shrubs will try to be native to New York State, to the. Okay, and then it says plants and shrubs will try to be native to New York State to the maximum extent practicable, which is also a good idea. Um, so we might want to be. Soon Florida, God only knows. Okay, sustainable transportation infrastructure. Require the development. Require the development to provide support for transportation choices such as back bike racks and or storage dedicated car sharing spaces. Uh, a van or pool car service, electric vehicle charging stations. So this is like if somebody was to build a large something. With, um. Either a lot of, uh, workers going to work there or residents. That you would want to have the ability to have transportation choices. So the only thing that people took out was. May at its discretion require the develop, uh, the development to provide support. And they took out to the extent practical.
Yeah, so we actually kind of made it a little more emphatic.
Yes. I I don't have a problem with that. Anyone else?
No.
Okay, going on to section six point three trademark architecture. I think this is where we're going to talk about this now. So, um, let's just read this opening paragraph. Nobody seems to have objected to that. About what it sort of explains what a formula business is.
But it didn't not not that important, but key points that there was a sentence moved from B one, I think, up into A.
Um, yeah, it's this, yeah, the, um.
And I'm in support of that change. It's.
So that moved, uh, something from under one that in order to the second sentence up to the last.
Yeah.
A.
Okay, yeah, but.
Okay.
I think that's a good change.
Yeah, so basically, again, A is sort of the, uh, the theme. And then we go into formula businesses are hereby regulated as follows. No trademarked architecture shall be allowed. Formula based businesses shall be allowed only when the use is allowed pursuant to table one of article four. And it is sized according to table two of article four and cited designed and of a style fully consistent with design standards in section six point one. And all other requirements of the zoning law. Any comments that people have in here?
Well, so this gets us back to, you know, are we gonna require the net dish roots, um, so, because there's, there's.
Right.
Well, my, are you talking about the drive-through facilities?
No, the number one, B one, which is more of a general no trademark architecture. So a Dollar General that. Their trademark architecture is a flat roof building. Goes back to then you would not allow a trap, a flat roof building. Or at least one that looked that way. They they put on false facades.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I I'm okay with leaving that paragraph the way it is. But but the.
And I'm in favor of leaving that paragraph the way it is.
Yeah, I think we do. It's just, you know, I mean. Do we go back and and revisit those other things? I would say no, but.
We have that roofing part that we have to go back and look at, so.
I don't know that we, you know.
Well, I either have to, I have to take off the asterisks at some point, so.
Anyway, you know, so, I mean, we kept on saying, let's wait until we get to the front of the businesses and see what it says.
Right.
And now it's saying go back to.
Right, to that.
Other thing and and so.
And that's really all it says.
Okay, so now it says no drive-through facility shall be allowed. What are the comments?
And I I I commented on that because I thought we agreed that we would allow them.
Yeah, so so again, just a reminder that when it stated here in this section, this would only apply to formula businesses. So formula businesses would not be allowed to have drive-through facilities. Other kinds of commercial operations would be allowed.
Oh. Well, so even so, I guess I thought we agreed that they could be allowed, so.
I.
I was gonna say, if you're gonna allow other business to have drive-through, I don't know how you could say a formula business couldn't.
Yeah.
So this would be, let's say, somebody wants to have a Dunkin' Donut franchise.
Yeah.
And, um, it has to not look like every other Dunkin' Donut franchise. But could it have a drive-through or not? Um, I guess I'll just say that this was sort of the town of Ithaca's, um, thinking when the. When they originally built the Dunkin' Donut, um, at Judd Falls.
Right.
And the basic, the basic issue that people discussed was, um, trash. Was they felt that people. Drink their coffee and then throw their cup out the window at some particular point.
Um, yeah.
Yeah. Um. After about, I think fifteen years, they allowed the drive-through to go in. Um, so.
They resisted it.
They resisted it for fifteen years, but then they allowed it to happen. And also they allowed the drive-through to go in at the. Walgreen next door or whatever that is, you know, the.
But the traffic that goes to the Dunkin' Donuts versus the Walgreens has got to be. Some factor of ten.
Yes, and people sell them for their prescriptions.
You know, I think, you know, as long as you have the access, there's room on the lot for cars to maneuver. And for cars who are not going through the drive-through to, you know, to maneuver. Um. You know, that's certainly the traffic, the internal circulation pattern and. The location of the drive-through in terms of, you know, cars coming out of the drive-through, turning left or right. That all has to have enough space to work right. Those those are the more practical issues relating to the drive-through.
Right, I, and that's already in, that has, that's in sort of site plan review.
Yeah, that would be covered in site plan. I mean, I don't know if this is a design, if the task force was thinking this was a design. Issue or a intensity issue or what what was your thinking on this?
Um, I'm I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move that we delete item two.
And I'll I'll second that. Um, Gina, you said about trash is an interesting, if I would next, I was sitting here trying to figure out what would be the reasons for not allowing a drive-through? And that was definitely one I hadn't thought of. I hadn't thought of any others, though. But I, yeah.
Have you ever gotten stuck, uh, down? Have you ever been driving up Route thirteen, uh, by the, is it a KFC down there and gotten stuck? Because people for the drive-through are are actually bleeding out into the.
Yeah.
So so that's a site plan issue that needs to be addressed. That I don't think that's a reason to outlaw drive-throughs in general.
No, I I thought we were gonna allow them, so I'm in favor of allowing them. I can, is that number, I can't see what number two is.
Yeah, that's it.
That's no drive-through facility.
Was anybody on the task force, the?
Yeah, Barb, Michelle and myself, but I can't remember the rationale behind that statement. And Tim as well, maybe Tim, maybe you remember.
I I think that it, my vague recollection is that it came up as just a. A bypass of general resistance to. Say Dunkin' Donuts next to Brookton's Market or something like that. I don't remember it being that serious of an issue.
No, I I don't remember. In fact, actually, my memory of it and, but Nan, you would know this and would correct me. I thought you just put that in there so we could discuss it later. I didn't think it was something we had discussed previously.
No, no, this, um. Well, I think there's other places that that I have a note on mind that there's multiple places where the question about drive-throughs come up. So I think that, um, I don't remember if I added this originally or if the task force did. But I think that it was, it was carried through because it shows up in other places.
Okay.
So if we take, you know, if you're gonna allow drive-throughs, we we need to kind of scrub and make sure that there there's not any language somewhere else that's contradicting it.
Yeah.
So I I basically heard general support for that, so I'm taking that out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Um. Utilities. The review board may require, well, well, let's say, um. The, I guess we got it rid of the word, the planning review board and it's just the review board and.
Right, again, that was from Nan's July document and didn't get to, uh, incorporated into the Google doc.
Okay.
What's a veil?
What's a what?
A veil.
Like a ditch, a veil?
Okay.
Where is it?
Oh, here.
Indeed, to depict water lines.
Oh, you know, that might be, should that be a swell?
Whale.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Swell.
Yeah, swell.
Let's see. Matter of fact, let's change it to swell. I like that better.
They're like ditches. I said, okay. Fire hydrants and other elements except, okay, so we have changed that. We have whipping. Six point five additional standards for specific uses. So these are home standards. These are general standards for home occupations. Um, which.
Oh, hmm, wait a minute. Back up six point two fourteen. I had a note that I somehow missed. Well, way back there, I was asleep at the switch. Uh.
We're gonna be.
Original fourteen, it's probably no fourteen anymore. It's probably thirteen. Uh, yes, so, um.
Where is it?
And you private note in the word document that you made a change from encouraging to requiring. I just want to make sure the zoning commission noted that change and was happy with.
I have no idea. Tell me what the title, the title is.
Right here, it's it's right up.
Ah. Materials?
Yeah, no, it's now a requirement. See, it was encouraged to provide. I think we did just talk about that. Never mind. Move on. We're good with this.
inquire.
Okay. Um, I'm going to, where are?
We're, we're at home occupation six point five point one.
Okay. I am.
Are there comments here?
Yeah.
There was a, there's, there's one comment there. I don't know.
So generally, I just thought we should look at six, which is various requirements, but in particular, this question of noise. Which we've talked about before. And the very least, I think that it needs to be sort of an average level of noise. And I think the official phrase is, you know, D B L E Q. Or something like that, which I think I quote there, but you know, if you've got a machine shop, right? If you're repairing cars and you get the the pneumatic, you know, wrench out, you're probably gonna exceed fifty-five decibels. For a few seconds, and I think that probably should be allowed, but I I don't know what the people think, but I thought in general six, we should look at these. Conditions and make sure we're all really happy with them, but I thought the noise one should be changed to, um. Uh, fifty-five decibels, uh, measured on maybe an eight hour equivalent level, or I don't know the right. Stuff, but.
Um, so you're saying on average.
On average, and the average can be computed either on. Uh, you name the time interval, right? Is that over average of an hour? Is it average over eight hours? And I I don't know the right number. Maybe Nan would have a suggestion of. But you get, Ned, that, you know, you don't want a lot of consistent, high loud noises, right? That wouldn't be fair to the neighbors, but if you've got a couple during the day, is that really a problem? So how do we? Quantify that.
What if we said something like on average over a nine-hour period?
Well. Normal business, though, because that could get you really loud noises for three hours.
And wouldn't want that, right.
You know, that could be a motocross track in my neighbor's yard, which I already have, so.
I had the bump for a while.
Yeah.
Kill me now. It was the singing.
Yeah, the the noise, you know, this, this could get quite detailed. If you really wanna address. Like, if you look at D E C's, um, guidance on noise, I mean, it's. The duration, it's the pitch and tone and intensity. It's, you know, the topography effects that there's all sorts of things that goes into determining nuisance noise. Um, this, I think from a site plan review perspective. You wanna find out. First of all, does the new use produce any noise? Uh, you know, is the home-based business going to make a noise? Um. And, um. You know, actually, you know, this one is gonna be a hard one because. None of your home-based businesses go through sort of any kind of review. So this is kind of in there for that if there's ever a complaint about something, the code enforcement officer has something to look at as a standard. Um, you know, it you could have something vague in there, like it can't exceed nuisance noise at the property line. Which then leaves it to be interpreted as to what that really means. Fifty-five, uh, you know, there, I'm sure there are some places in town that fifty-five is probably the ambient. Um. Noise level along seventy-nine where you have trucks going through, um, I bet it's higher, so, um. You know, that's why it has, you know, exceeding the ambient noise levels or whichever is less. Um. You know, yeah, averaged.
I'd average over an hour. I don't think a whole workday is appropriate for the exact reason Ernie suggested.
I just, one, one thing I I noted is, uh, I saw a sign when I was driving to Danby the other day, that it's something about no noise law.
Yeah.
Or or something, and I'm wondering what Danby is up to.
They're, they're considering a new noise ordinance.
Okay, so maybe we should. Put an asterisk here and come back and revisit this one. Um, and find out a little bit more about what Danby is doing, just because they maybe have done a lot of research that we don't need to redo.
Okay. How about we do that?
Can I, can I just add something here? Just for context, I mean, I think it's helpful to remember that the town. Did propose a very, very detailed noise ordinance. Now, it must be fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
And the town board decided not to do that. Um. I would just keep that, keep that in mind. I would anticipate that. That the town board would be reluctant to develop a very detailed. Voice ordinance at this moment. I can't speak for everyone. That's just my hunch based on public feedback you get. So in the context of this. I mean, we look at Danby, that's probably what they're doing.
Yeah, they're very difficult and they're very contentious everywhere, um.
Right, I think what we need is a few reasonable limits in the zoning law and not a detail, but I think all Ernie's suggesting is. Well, maybe they've come up with some noise levels based on their research. I think it's worth checking that out, not gonna hold my breath. But, you know, I think that's a good idea, yeah, but I think it's something like a one-hour average and maybe we can poke around, but something. That's that.
Decibels per ten minutes out of every hour or, you know.
Yeah, some, something. I don't know the right way to specify.
Um, I I will send you all tomorrow, um. New York State D E C has a very detailed, um, document that they, that kind of sets the standards for noise studies. And it's got a lot of information in there about. Ambient noise and nuisance noise, and it might be worth skimming through, and I'll I'll send it to you tomorrow.
Okay.
You're gonna say fifty-five decibels is what, pretty much?
Uh, I forget, it's like, uh, a coffee percolator, uh, or something, you know, it's not very high.
Right.
It was. Well, that's what this D, this D E C document has a description of what different, you know, what a lawnmower makes and what a chainsaw makes and things like that. So I think that would give you some more idea about what that means.
Right, and remember, this also says that at their own property line, and it's not, you know, not making that noise, whatever. It's making that noise that extends over the property line. Okay, so we're gonna come back and look at that particular thing, but everything else here, there's nothing else until we get to E. Which we.
Um, that, that was a, that was a deletion, uh, based on the twelve twenty-eight comments.
Okay. Um. So that's that section, and then we go on to minor home occupations. Um. And they have, they have a six-foot square, a six-foot square, a six-square foot sign. They have, um, we got rid of up to fifty percent of accessory buildings may be used for minor home occupations.
Um, going back to, um, B, the main paragraph on B, one of Barb's original comments was. Um, is it reasonable to expect a minor home occupation to comply with commercial standards for lighting, parking and landscaping? Edit this to just comply with noise and signage to be discussed.
I think that seems reasonable. How would we do that?
Um.
Um, the sentence that's highlighted in under B, however, the minor home occupation shall also meet all requirements of section six point. five point one A and B. That could be deleted.
But, or, or would it then just say required to meet the noise and light? Wh- whichever things you don't want them to do, right? You have to say what they do have to do, I think, still.
Yeah, so, so my, my large, my biggest concern was, um, was enforcing, uh, parking standards and, uh, lighting standards, you know, for, for commercial area. Because they, they're pretty specific for a commercial area, and I'm not sure that we want to do that, especially for a minor home occupation.
So we're saying noise then?
Was there something else in your comment, Barbie? You said?
Well, it was signage, but that is already covered under number B one, where it has one sign.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to get rid of noise requirement. We are keeping noise requirement. Okay.
Which is probably only in B, not six point five point one A. What is, what is six point five point one A?
Um, let me go back and look. The six point five one A is, um.
That actually has the noise in it.
Okay.
And so we'll get rid of N B then.
Well, depends what's in B.
Well. Actually, I think, I think that number needs to be, that number needs to be revised because this, we are in currently in six point five point one.
Okay, so we'll figure out this number. I'm going to put it in yellow and then we can figure it out.
Okay.
All of this can be in yellow and we'll make sure that it's right. Okay, oh, no, not that. Get back.
Um, okay, so yeah, I'll, we'll have to go back and review what the original was, and then I'll, I can tell you what the new numbers are for that section, and you can decide. If all you want is the noise, then I'll just find whatever the section of noise was and put that in there.
Okay. We can do that.
Um, there was a comment, um, I don't know who made it originally, but there was a comment up to discuss the, the one, number one, about one sign not exceeding six square feet in area. For a minor home occupation. So these are.
Too small? I think it's okay. Six square feet is what, three point, three up, three by two? It's not very big, but. That would be. You want to make it sixteen? Not exceeding sixteen.
You know, well, the only thing I can say is, you know, minor home occupations are supposed to be.
Yeah.
You know, minor, they're not big commercial, lots of people coming and going, and so they, you know, if you want to make it bigger, fine, but typically, they, they don't have, many of them don't have signs at all.
Okay.
I, I, I am not in favor of making that larger, or not listening to making that much larger.
Okay, so we've left that. Okay.
Yeah, the image I have in my, my mind is the Donovan lighting sign has got to be about two square feet. At most, uh, it seems to be plenty adequate to, to tell us what's going on there.
Okay, so we're on to then major home occupations. And.
Wait, there was, there was this comment here.
Just to be clear, we're still, we're still on minor home occupations, especially four point three. That the language there needs to be consistent with what we put into terminology. And that says that, um, a minor home occupation uh, can employ up to three full-time equivalent employees in addition to the owner operator and any other family participants in the home occupation who reside on the premises.
Okay. So only the person or persons who occupy the dwelling, their family members, and three additional full-time equivalent persons may be employed. Is that?
And, and up to, I think.
Uh, and up to, okay. Okay. That sounds good. Okay, major home occupations. We, in number two, we have relevant design standards of section five point one. And I have, is that the right section and appropriate standards of article?
Uh, it's not seventy-six, it's seven.
Right. Yeah, again, that was, six was crossed out, seven put in, and then it lost the cross out, so we get seventy-six.
Okay. So at some point, we will check all of these to make sure that they are all consistent.
So, um, yeah, I have to go back and see what five point one was. Let me look and see. I mean, on my end, I'll just look for five point one and see what that was, because I don't remember.
I have to say, this is like five point one is the general standards for non-residential and business commercial and business building design.
Yeah, so we, you had earlier tonight, you, you decided that none of those standards were going to, um,
Be appropriate.
Required for home occupation, so this is no longer right.
Yep.
So.
Well, do we want to do that? I mean, this is major home occupations.
Yeah.
What are, what are major home occupations we have in the town?
Well. Um, we are likely to have, I would say, um, right now, we probably have things like the Snow's Farm. They don't actually sell cheese from their farm, but they make cheese.
That's an egg.
That's an egg use. So it would be someone who, you know, has a pottery shop and then a retail store that has customers coming and going, or
A garage. A garage. A garage.
Yeah. Right.
I think I have to go back and read that section.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I don't, I mean, I think even with most major home occupations, I think that they're going, ongoing now, people are reusing existing structures, like, you know, I don't know if you would like the, the kennel, right? There's a, a falling down barns where they, they, they have stuff. But we've discussed before, like, like gaggle, where the, where the owner does live on the premises, but four of the five buildings in the premises are classified commercial by the Department of Assessment. I would not consider that a home occupation. Um, because there's only one residential building and everyone else is commercial. So I, you know, again, I can't think of too many major home occupations in town.
I think the things that are likely to happen in the future might well be related to cannabis, if, if the town decides at some point to allow the cannabis uses. Um, which could be, you know, the, the moral equivalent of a winery.
Like Pa- Peyton well drilling. I don't know if there's any sign, I mean, you know, the distinction between minor and major has to do partly with number of employees. Partly with the amount of signage. I mean, he certainly has a fair amount of equipment storage, right? Because he's, he's drilling wells. He's got a barn on the adjacent property. Do you think he qualifies as a major or minor home occupation?
He only has two employees.
Yeah, he only has two employees, so he's.
And his barn is primarily sap for sap boiling.
Yeah.
Right.
And he doesn't do drilling anymore. He just does water repairs.
Alright, so it's probably a minor home occupation then?
Yeah. I think you're right. I don't think we have a lot of major. I, 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 I mean, I.
No, this, this, we're planning for the future, you know, but I just can't think of any examples.
Yeah, and that could be an example of something, or like the, um, the garage up here. I wouldn't, I'm not sure if you ever would have considered it a home occu- a home occupation, but I'm not, so I don't know how that land was divided, but that was a home. The people who owned it lived next door, right?
I, I can give you an example that's taking place a lot, um, just north of where I am in Montgomery County, where they have a large Amish population. They're not farms, but they're putting in, um, they, on their property, auction houses, furniture making businesses, sawmills, and they're, they're calling them home occupations because their house is on the property. Um, so those would all be, those would all be major home occupations.
Right.
Right, but at some point, doesn't the secondary, which is still true for major occupations, become violated?
At, at some point, you, yes, technically it should. It's, it's difficult sometimes. Well, that's not a, not necessarily a good example, because they're, they don't like to come into the plane board or figure that there's any connection with the local government at all, but, you know, assuming, you know, that that was, yes, it would still have to be secondary to the youth. Doesn't always, I mean, that's, that's an enforcement issue.
Right. But, so, so the reason I raise the point is that to me, if indeed the, we can guarantee the use remains secondary, then I am less concerned with having the design standards of section five point one apply. Because the place is going to, you know, maybe if, if the, if the pertinent structure is not built according to those design standards, maybe that's okay, because it's still like a minor piece of the property compared to the house and everything else. But if it's going to be harder to really enforce that part, then I became, become more concerned about having design standards applied. So that's why I raised this issue.
Yeah.
Good point.
And my feeling is we keep them as secondary.
Now, would you suggest doing that?
Well, that, that.
Well, then it's controlled by number one. It's no more than fifty percent of the floor area of the dwelling unit can be used for a major home occupation. That, that's what forces it to be secondary.
Right.
That's New York State law. It's the building code.
Right.
That's not us.
But you're going to use a hundred percent of the accessory building.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah, but it's still got to be. Yes, right, right. It still has to be secondary, so that probably should be added in.
So how?
It, it can't be the tail wagging the dog, right? You've got, you've got a thousand square foot house and a ten thousand square foot apartment structure, right? That's.
Right, right.
So is that part of the definition of accessory that it's?
Yes, an accessory building is always secondary, although I am sure there are old barns and other buildings on properties that are bigger than the houses that are also on that property.
Exactly.
So, let's see.
So maybe this one is a, like, um, maybe this one needs to be more specific to say that an accessory building may be used for a major hot, home occupation. Um, provided that, I don't, trying to think of the right word, provided that, um, the, the wording is escaping me at the moment.
I'm gonna, because I do think we have to think about this. I'm going to put this in yellow. And I think we're going to come back, um, and that. Because it's.
And, but no, what, what it does say is it's only the pertinent structure that has to meet those design standards, so I'm a little more comfortable, you know, with that, but.
Well, it also says accessory building. It doesn't say accessory buildings.
Yeah.
Which, um, is an interesting thing, that, for instance, as you mentioned with like gaggle, that there are several other buildings. It's not just a single building. Think about this section. I'm just going to put this note in it. We might even, I doubt we'll get to it tonight, but I think it's a, it's an issue. Okay, so let's go on to uh, accessory dwellings and uses.
Well, I, I have a comment about the exterior storage of materials.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I guess I wonder if we really need this. Uh, I mean, it just seems to me there might be cases when they are not completely enclosing their from this, you know, I can't see the whole sentence there, but they're not, it's not completely enclosed.
It's a, so right now, it's saying that there shall be no exterior storage of, of materials. Unless they. Enclosed.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure we need that, but that's my.
Well, that, you know, that, that is, would be maybe not enclosed, but maybe enclosed or fenced. And so someone who has, you know, all sorts of equipment or whatever, um, stored outside. I think that's what that is supposed to prevent, so that you're, you're either screening or enclosing a lot of storage that makes it no longer really a residential looking property.
So for instance, the, the building that's on the corner of, um, Brooktondale Road, and is that mid on, wherever that road is, where there's the, there, it's like an old red bill, it's a building and now has a giant fence around it, and they have a lot in the backyard.
So how about if we, so if, if you look right below this, um, there's a line, uh, that was, uh, deleted in, in the July document. Uh, I wonder if we should go back and include that, but delete, uh, this first one. So, so put in all exterior storage used in conjunction with a major home occupation must be screened from view or stored within structures and not visible from the public way or adjacent properties.
Yeah, I could, I could see keeping that and getting rid of the one above it.
Yeah. And, and I'm going to assume that the and not visible is applying to the storage and not the structures.
Yeah, I see the items that are being stored and not be visible.
I could see where, like a sawmill wants to drive over and they just put it under a roof. They, they don't cover it, they don't block it from view. Just for instance.
Or I don't know, if you're a welder, maybe you've got piping or something, you know.
But the, the whole point is all you have to do is have, you know, even shrubbery, blocking it from the public roadway or a fence.
That's why I think that, that sent, the second sentence is better than the first one, because the first one says they have to be completely enclosed.
Right, I agree. I, I, there's no need to be inside a structure.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so I have, I'm, uh, now going to keep this section, but I can't figure out how to keep it at the moment. But I've written keep this for the second sentence. Because I can't figure out how to undo the undoing without totally messing it up, but I will figure it out when I get home.
Yeah, and I, I'm making all of these changes in the word document as we go along anyway.
Okay.
So we'll have them both.
And then in number four, um, I thought our definition did not, um, have a limit on the number of employees for a major home occupation. Am I wrong?
I don't think it does.
Let me look, um.
Uh, no, you're, you're, you're right, and I made a note there, um, that, that the terminology says there's no, no, no limit uh, on the, uh, on the number of persons.
No, actually, the definition does. The, uh, the definition says the enterprise is conducted by an owner operator who must reside on the premises or an adjacent property and employs up to three full-time equivalent employees in addition to the owner operator and any other family participants. That, oh, wait, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm reading minor. I'm reading minor. Uh, yes, you're right. There is no limit on the number of employees.
Okay, yeah. So I think just four goes away.
Okay, yeah.
And I'm fine with the next one. On parking.
So are.
I think we're moving on, aren't we?
Yeah. So when, are you ready to move on?
So have we lost?
What?
Yeah, I didn't, we lost the town hall, but.
Oh.
Gene, are you with us?
I don't think they're hearing us.
Yeah, we can't hear the town hall. Ah, techie to work. Yeah, nice sign language, but, uh.
Hold up the signs.
That's what we get for trying to do a two and a half hour meeting.
Yeah. Maybe this is a sign that we're, we're done for tonight.
Yeah. Alright, yeah, town hall, we can't hear you, I don't know if you can hear us. This town hall is muted.
Yeah, he, you're, you're muted, can you unmute yourself? Oh, hello?
Still can't hear you guys. Oh dear.
And can they hear us, Ernie? If you can hear us, wave if you can hear us, Ernie. Oh, Jean's waving, okay, Jean can hear us.
So they can only partly hear us because they heard Ernie as Jean, but you know.
You can hear me.
Hey.
They can't hear us.
Now we can, we can hear you now.
Yes, we can, now we can.
Okay.
So what would you say?
We had, we had. Yes, they can hear us. Can you? Yeah, they, we had an AV problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Uh, we move on, I wanted to say what Ernie was saying is that. Bruce was saying, sorry. What Bruce was saying was that. Uh, he operates a home business and he doesn't have his stuff screened from the, the road. Um. Which would be fine for his business, but he, he thinks it might be a, a problem for people to be not. I'm trying to think about something like.
That really doesn't need to be completely out, whether I have a three-sided shed. Okay, and it's a story and a half, it's a salt lot. I have ladders, I have a power washer, I have painting equipment, I have sprayers, I have things that are open. Towards the road. And, and anybody else who builds a, a outbuilding or something like that. For ease of loading and stuff would most likely do the same thing. So that you didn't have to drive around to the backside of the building to do that. Or, you know, I'm just saying, you create. I'm not so sure everything has to be, it could be brush, it could be bushes, it could be anything. But to say you have to have it enclosed, I'm. I'm kind of.
Right, so I think we've gone away with saying enclosed and going this was screened, and so Bruce, a question for you, yeah, would it be? That burdensome to either, you know, plant some bushes or hang a. You know, screen or a fence of some kind, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm being serious, I mean, is, how big a problem would it be to say to screen your particular storage area? Um. From typical view along the road.
Put in a hedge. Or, or fence across the front, yeah.
Just be something that I don't really see a reason to have to do it, it's just. It's, my equipment's not intrusive, it's something I use every day, it's something.
Yes, so, so when, when would this ever get enforced? This is only gonna get enforced if somebody complains. Somebody said, I'm really upset looking at Brutus. Duck, they, they come to the town and they say, isn't there a law?
Right.
And they say, well, yes, there is, um, and here it is buried in Arizona ordinance. Uh, but because none of this comes up for, for permitting, um, it's not gonna be subject to review unless there's a complaint. Um, so the question is. What point does the language, um, define the, or how well does language define the? Uh, the egregiousness of the, uh, of the fault, I guess, um, so.
Um.
I think major home occupations do have some review, um. Miners are P, but major, don't they have something, ESPR or something?
Um, let me look.
Major home, major home occupations. I think do.
Um. Which is. Yes, ASPR.
Right, so in that case, Ernie, there would be a review of a new grabbing, and again, this wouldn't apply to Bruce.
Right, well, of course not, but, um, so, so it'd be the make, it would be somebody who's. Like, to the building department saying, I'm gonna build a new, you know, building over here to, so I can. Uh, do oil changes, uh, for my friends, or, you know, whatever, I don't know, like, it's a small. Small automobile operation, so then that's not gonna get permitted without going. Through the abbreviated site plan review process.
Right.
And in which case, they would then go to this part of the zoning ordinance and say, hey, you know, it'll be okay, just put some doors on that.
Or put up a screen, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I think the fact that it's screened and not enclosed really makes a big difference there.
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay, so I'm gonna suggest that we stop here, um, to leave six point five, four, five point two and on, because we have. Two things we need to do tonight.
How much more is there?
Uh, of six. Um.
Lots.
There's lots, yeah, sorry, this, this means take my Zizol. Which I'll do when I get home. So, um, but I did want to say that I have written, written a definition for hamlet, which I will send you. Uh. And I will, um. This is what it is, the term hamlet is not defined in New York State law, it refers to a small settlement that does not have its own government. But is part of a town or larger municipality, it may have a post office or a public building such as a fire station or a church. But it may just be a crossroad area, usually with some historic significance. Houses are generally closer together than in a rural area. I will send you that, so that we can include that in, because we don't have a definition of a hamlet. Um, and, uh, I said that I, that our next meetings in. August will be. Uh, I wrote this, they're August. Hold on a second, I can actually look. Monday, August first. And. Tuesday, August sixteenth. Um, and the reason I did not put August twenty-third in is August twenty-third is a general election in our county. And, um, the polls are up until nine, and I don't think we should interfere with the general, the oddly, yeah, so the first, Monday, the first. And Tu- and Tuesday the sixteenth. Um, and then I will try to figure out dates in September. And get to the six. Next Monday, I know, we're ripping right along.
And you, you obviously didn't get my email.
No, I didn't, what did you say?
I said I could meet every day in August except the fourth.
Oh, okay.
And I'll be gone from the fourteenth of September to about the second of October.
Okay.
Yeah, I got some dates that I.
Okay, so those are the, the August first was, yeah, August first was a date that everyone said they could meet. And, um, the only other date in the time period that I gave people, um, we could try the thirtieth. Then we want to meet on the sixteenth and the thirtieth instead of the first. Or, but I think we're whipping along here, so.
It would give me a little time to go over some of this, but that's. Either here or there, people are doing it, so.
Well, I didn't ask people about the thirtieth, let's, let's say the first and the sixteenth at this point, and maybe we'll consider August thirtieth a, um. September meeting, because it's pretty damn close. Uh, and see what we can get done, so we'll do, we'll do those two dates, um, everyone said they could come. Uh, and the sixteenth, Bruce will be away, I'm hoping that he can catch up on Zoom afterwards. Um. I think that's all I have.
Sixteenth of August, I will be here.
Oh, you will be here, okay, that's fine then, great, so they'll all be here, um. And remember to go and vote on the twenty-third, because it's gonna be fascinating, you get to have this directly from, sign in twice, did you know this? It's very confusing, if you live in Tompkins County. We all have, should go and vote because Tom Reed resigned, and so there's an election to fill his seat. Now, as of January first, we will no longer be in that district, but this is to fill that seat for the next four months. So that's a general election for that seat, so that's when you go and vote, you'll sign in for that special election. And then if you're a Democrat, you will sign in to separately to vote in the two primaries. One for New York State Senate and one for, um, Congress in the new district, which is the one that extends to Connecticut.
Wow.
I know, I think it's a, it's a miracle that I know this, because it's so freaking confusing.
I think that's gonna be confusing for ballot box.
It's enormously confusing and, um. But it's a. It's, I think it's, you know, it's to see an action, there you are, okay.
I did see in the email, I was wondering if you were going to discuss. The hamlet question about Caroline.
Yes, I, we have a couple more minutes, and what do people think about making Caroline Center a hamlet? I, I don't have a problem with it, I think we can stick it under something else. I do think it's an act, an opportunity for a commercial area on seventy-nine. In the other direction.
Well, that was my next question, whether we're gonna discuss that also.
Oh, we will, I mean, we absolutely need to, we need to discuss that, um, because there. Nobody, people who wanted it to be a hamlet. Didn't say what they wanted their hamlet to be like, they just said they felt sad that it wasn't a hamlet.
Well, from the definition you read, it sounded like it said historic.
Yes.
Definition, so it sounded like.
Yeah, I think they felt. Like we hadn't.
Yeah, it didn't seem to be related to, you know, I want to be as known as a hamlet, it was just, we want to be recognized as, as. What we've always been, which is, you know, we have a sign.
Right, yes, so I'm, I don't have any objection to including them as a hamlet and putting them in something. Um, but I have to think about which ham, which hamlet they would be like.
Well, they would be their own ham, but, you know.
No, but would they be like residential, yeah, would they be like Beesimer and, um. West Sladeville, or would they be more like Caroline Center, say?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I mean, so I think that's something we should go off and think about. Um, because I don't have any objection to including them in the zoning laws, since they feel. They feel sad.
Jean, can, can we put that on our next agenda, um, and, and have a map projected? So we can talk about, um, you know, the issue of, of Caroline as a hamlet. And what the boundaries might be, um, so that we can all kind of get our heads around what that might look like.
Yeah, I can, and in fact, um, Nan, I will drive out there and let you know. There are signs now that say Caroline, I'll let you know the street numbers of where they are.
Okay.
Is it maybe, I mean, maybe there's a, maybe there's a clear place that Rick will notice that I haven't noticed, but.
Well, we can, we can look at the lots, um. He's on vacation this week, so I don't know if I can have a new map done by Monday, but I can certainly put a map up. To show you where the parcels are and, and you can make some decisions, yes.
Yeah, I think, I think just an existing map, so we can, you know, visualize what's there, um. And it would be good if we have an existing map that shows the parcels and also shows where, uh, farmland. Um, you know, farmland of various, uh, classifications is, so. We can take that into consideration when we're thinking about the notion of, um. How big the hamlet should be, where it would be, and what would be allowed there.
Okay, yep, I have those.
Great. Okay, it's nine thirty, tonight was tiring, but we got a lot done, congratulations, thanks everyone, thank you, Nan. Um. Let's go home and drink heavily.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Go do the dishes.
That's what I have to do.
God, the Daniel did them already, the whole time I did.